Everybody ready? And then we'll call the meeting order and begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call.
Mockler.
Here.
Freelo.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Easy as absent Hammond.
Here.
There any conflict of interest declarations? Okay, so ask for approval of the agenda with the addition of ditch board and the discussion about Clay Rule Water.
So moved.
Do we need to add the bond?
Yeah, I was wondering that too.
Also Carrie?
Uh, yes, we probably should do that.
Okay. And a discussion of bonds.
Second, yeah, oh, we already got that doing, sorry.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
So a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A motion carries and visitors to be heard, there any visitors to be heard? Nope. Okay. Then Laura Holland back. So you got your quarterly, quarterly report, it looks good. Busy?
Yes, getting very busy gearing up for summer, so I'm just here to give you guys my quarterly report today. I think you guys all have a copy in your packets. Included some pictures again, we've been busy doing workshops and activities for the kids and community service. Our upcoming activities is more workshops and gearing up for summer contests and of course the fair. Right, yeah. We had safety day last week with kindergarten and first grade, that went very well, so. Excellent, it was nice.
All right, do you need a formal motion to accept or?
Yeah. No.
Any?
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the foragers that helped on Lion's Pancake Night.
Yeah.
Sick and I think they they more than adequately suffered.
Yo, good. Yeah.
All right, well, thank you Laura.
Yes, you're welcome, thank you guys.
Looks like a great quarter.
Also just noticed that TC is on Zoom, so we've got.
Okay.
Not, he is on Zoom.
I was looking over there to see.
All right. Good morning Dave. All right, Brad Polly. You're up. We gotta pick up Chuck Ben.
So. I have a question. Now what's the person? To pick a bid, okay. So last Thursday I had to pass up a chance to get a five fifty Ford. Four door chassis like we've had ordered for two years because it's over the fifty thousand dollar mark. So I'm asking your advice, I guess. I want to put a bid out for a pickup, but I kind of have it specific for a F five fifty and I apologize, I forgot to make copies of this for you, just take a quick, I think if I put that in the paper. We kind of did the same thing with our mechanic, you know, put it down specifically, they had the paper so certain people could get to it, so I kind of specified this pickup that Boyer Ford had for like four hours, they all got sold. I just happened to catch the salesman when he unloaded off the truck and I can't buy anything over fifty thousand dollars unless we do it on Sourcewell or something like that, or if I put a pickup out for bid.
Didn't we already do that one time?
Uh, not this year.
No, but two years ago for the same pickup, right?
No, no, we didn't, because it was under fifty thousand. But since then, I pick up what we have ordered through Vermillion Ford, which was supposed to be delivered last year and we're getting into the, they still don't have a build date. And it come around in August last year and they cut everybody off. So I'm not sure if I'm going to get a pickup through them or not, but I specifically put down what the sheet was on this pickup and he's got four more coming at Boyer. So I need to get it in the paper in two weeks. But I don't know if I can do it that specifically. I did put it in or equivalent. But, and I did not put Ford in the line anywhere, but that's what's coming. So I don't know if that's, and it's seventy thousand, seventy two thousand something. But then it's a four door, four wheel drive, duly, just a chassis, six, seven diesel, ten speed automatic XL, nothing fancy unfortunately for that money. But I didn't know that would cover me for attempting to bid it because Dodge and shabby, I've talked to all them and they don't have nothing on the lot, the ones in Vermillion, the duelys down there with the box. Them are ninety to a hundred thousand because they're the big country or big, whatever Dodge calls them anyway, they're the fancy ones, like I think in the GMC or something, a big country though.
High country.
High country, you know, so we're still down at XL, that's about the lowest you can get in a Ford, so I didn't know if that was a good idea to do it that way, that's what I'm asking. To me, it seems on the edge, but.
Well, you put it or equivalent, so, but my question would be if nobody bids, are you able to buy?
I, I would.
What happens to show up at, at any given moment then?
I would think like if nobody put in a bid, then it would be, if I tried, so I, then I could go buy. But I'm not sure that's, I don't know how up on that, I don't know, is that something I need to talk to Rod about?
I'd have to go back and read the bid book, I can't remember.
What, where would you advertise?
Oh, just in our papers here. Our local papers.
So we can't get anything through Sourcewell, huh?
No, Sourcewell doesn't do pickups, state bid, but state bid shut off last year in September. And I, I looked and there's everything says you can't bid, even while Andy was in the same predicament with his Explorer or the Interceptors or whatever.
Yeah.
And I, I look for Dodges. Uh, I guess I did not look at billions, but nobody, they put in the high end pickups. You know, because that's what everybody's looking for, like Sioux Falls Ford said, unless somebody orders XL, they, they never ordered an XL, or Boyer, you know, they're more of a work pickup division, so. And that's the cheapest, you know, we're looking at, which is crazy because his pickup is a twenty one and we give like forty two thousand, something like that, because they give us eighty five hundred dollar discount, fleet discount, which Ford has done away with that, because why?
They don't have to, in this market, yeah, they don't have to give any discounts.
Granted, it is a gas motor, but. So I just trying to figure out how I can. And so this pickup I have online at Ford is going to be over my fifty thousand dollar threshold too, and I told them to keep it in, I will figure something out. You know, and I don't, one time since I've been superintendent, we considered an emergency, but that was to get a lowboy because we needed to move our paper. And that's a little different just to pick up, I don't think a guy should be playing that, but I mean, that is a deal, but I, I just happened to call Boyer and he just unloaded one and four hours later, it was gone. I gotta have my, I gotta sign the papers about when it shows up. But I'm not signing for something that I don't have everybody's approval before.
So they won't bid, is that right? They, they won't bid?
They can't get, they can't get pickups to.
They don't have to bid.
No.
That's the problem anymore with this equipment, and it doesn't matter what equipment it is, if you're not there when it shows up, it's gone.
Yeah, what did we just, something we just had trouble with a couple of years ago and it showed up and that was used, I think that was our boom truck, right? We couldn't find a boom truck and one showed up and we jumped on it. Because they don't stick around, I mean, the used equipment, new equipment is just nuts. Angels construction equipment either. Oh, it was our, it was our, that tractor we bought.
Hmm, oh yeah.
That international tractor, I couldn't find John Deere, New Holland, anything that size. And that one just happened to roll off the truck today I drove by. So, but we bought that through Sourcewell, of course, but yeah, we can't do that on. I didn't realize that until this year, that Sourcewell doesn't do the pickups and Ford can't go around it either, or nobody can, it sounds like, so.
I would, I would put that out for bid and we'll figure out the, what happens if we can't get them and there's got to be some mechanism, we can't just be stuck.
So just so you know, our Highway Superintendent's Association uh, through Brown County. Dirk up there, the superintendent, he's head of our legislation committee. And at, he'll have, they're going to have something drafted up with a couple of his commissioners at the September convention where we're trying to, the highways superintendent's associations trying to get that lifted up to a hundred thousand. Because quite a few years back, we couldn't buy a pickup when it was twenty five thousand, we got it built up to fifty thousand. So I approached Dirk and a couple other superintendents and so there, he's got a commissioner assigned a legislative committee too, so. So at that September meeting, there should be something there for you guys to see, I hope. Where we can get it bumped up to, I mean, it's ridiculous, we gotta bump it up to a hundred grand just to buy a pickup.
Yeah, right, and why are they stopping at a hundred grand? I mean, there's other equipment that needs to be bought.
Because they don't, yeah, they don't like to, but like we said, the other equipment, we can go through Sourcewell. Or they, the state auditor allows us to use Minnesota state bid, which I'm not comfortable with that one, that's way too many loopholes to me, Sourcewell works good for us. But I, so I did buy a used pickup at Federal Surplus last week. It's an O nine for eighteen thousand five hundred bucks with eighty thousand miles. And it's a four door diesel duly.
Wow.
Three fifty though, which we can get by with, but I have something we're about, well, one pickup we're going to give to the courthouse, correct, that was what we decided a couple of years ago.
Yep.
And the other one, well, we got two pickups that are pretty questionable. So I mean, one of them, I don't think is even good enough to give to Scott, you know? So we're, we're kind of behind a couple, three here.
Oh, how heavy a load Steve Paul being?
Well, we get skid loader, uh, we have three fifty is the heaviest ones we have, and the one I tried to, that I put out at Vermillion Ford is a four fifty.
Yeah.
And I just kind of stuck with four fifty because the five fifty is a big step up, I mean, not only what you can carry, but like they got the three fifty duly with a flatbed, they're pulling the crack sealer uh, with it, and then we got pallets of crack seal on the back and that's, you know, that's getting loaded up there pretty good, we pulled the mini excavator, the skid loaders.
Yeah.
Um, the broom on the trailer behind us.
Yeah, you know, the, what, you know, towing up to like a backhoe is like.
Yeah, and we don't, we put that on our lowboy.
Yeah.
So.
Look, smaller than that, I can see where you could tow that with a four fifty usually.
Yeah, his, we upped his, mine's a two fifty, we upped his to a three fifty, just because someday it might end up on the crew, but even the three fifties, you know, were pushing, so I decided we, we better start upgrading here.
Yeah.
I see that Andy's got his hand raised on Zoom too, so.
Okay, Andy?
I was just gonna chime in, what Rod wants to do is possible, like you recall, I think Rod mentioned that we kind of went through this a few years ago and couldn't get a bid. And it's in the bid book, that you will have to advertise, I think you have to advertise twice uh, prior to the opening of the bids. But then you can negotiate, if there's no bids received, you can negotiate a price, but you have to negotiate for the same specs. So you can't come back and, and you know, if you advertise for a vehicle that Rod needs, but they have something similar, but doesn't meet the specs sitting out at Ford, you can't really negotiate for it. So you have to make sure that you have your specs realistic, that's something you can buy, but there's definitely, it's allowed in the bid book, Carrie mentioned reviewing that, I'd recommend that, double checking on that, but it can be done.
Yeah, those are the specs that he gave me for the pickup that was in Sioux Falls last week, I mean, except for cigarette lighter thing, you know, small things, I didn't put the whole thing down, but.
Yeah, you know, for example, just, you know, if, if you had say some sort of towing capability that you required, but the one you negotiate wouldn't have that. Uh, you, that wouldn't be legal, but you'd have to make sure that it's meeting the same requirements. I was bidding or advertising for police vehicles, and so I wouldn't have been able to go out and negotiate for something that that didn't meet those specs, but it can be done, you just have to go through these steps and it, it sounds like Rod's on the right track.
Yeah, the only thing that worries me is that these bid specs are so specific that if another truck came in that was you know, substantially similar, but lacking one of those things, you'd be out of luck, so we, we might want to make them, make them more general. And what, what's your timeline?
Well, I, I was, if you guys approved, I was gonna have it advertised these next two weeks. And then not necessarily be able to buy the pickup that day, but when the next one shows up, he's got four more coming in up there. And if we get one of those, then I gotta talk to Donnie Stewart to see for sure if he has a build date or if we try to get another one. I hate to buy two of them in one year, but on it. Because these, none of these are spoken for, that one yesterday or Thursday, Wednesday I guess it was, had not been spoken for, but four o'clock in the afternoon, it was already sold.
Yeah, so, so, but, but just in case um, somebody else came in with something substantially similar, we might want to loosen up those bid specs a little bit.
That's pretty basic, that's pretty basic specs.
Like it's, he's asking for a, well, five fifty.
Right.
The Ford is the only thing that makes it specific, but it says equivalent.
Uh, or.
Four door diesel.
Yeah.
Duly.
Duly.
Nine thousand five hundred.
Okay.
Those are all things that are pretty basic that we would want.
Okay.
Well, we wouldn't want to be adding anything beyond that.
Okay.
Or anything.
Or subtracting anything, I mean.
Right.
Uh, all right, now the fifty, fifty thousand limit, I, that matches what the state has been. And I haven't been associated with this, I stay away from the state, though. But uh, that's been the fifty, that fifty thousand has been the limit, spending limit at, at state too for a long time. And I suspect what that legislation would have to do is raise both the state limit as well as that of its, of its.
And that's what we based the twenty five thousand dollar one on, was the reason we couldn't buy a pickup.
Yeah.
And it, it went through thoroughly easy. You know, but now, well, when I first started as superintendent, fifteen thousand was the limit. And I mean, I bought a semi tractor fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety nine dollars.
Yeah.
But then it went up to twenty five thousand, then I don't remember when, maybe two thousand ten or maybe before that, it went up to fifty, but like if I'm gonna buy a load of mastic material, that's twenty five. So that's why we put all that stuff out for bids at the beginning of the year. Because you can't buy a semi load of mastic material for twenty five dollars.
All right.
So I have a question back to the specs. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
You.
Okay, um, what, our specs, does it say five fifty?
Yes.
What ones are coming in Rod, are they four fifties or five fifties?
Uh, five fifties, the ones that are coming in at Boyer. The one I have ordered at Vermillion Ford is a four fifty.
Okay, I was just checking because Andy said if there's towing capacities difference, that one worked, so I just wanted to make sure we had the right numbers.
Right, right.
So I'll move to put it out for bid.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to put it out to bid, and there's a second. Any further discussion?
So would that be open on April or May thirtieth? Carrie, or is there enough time?
May twenty third is our next meeting.
Oh, I thought last.
We moved it.
We moved it.
It's not the day after Memorial Day, it's the week before now.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, it would have to be June sixth.
Yeah. I was getting older, anyways.
Yes, so.
It is what it is.
Is what it is.
What we'd want to add to this would be the, the bids accepted until a certain date.
Right, that's.
Whatever you want to do with that.
Yeah, I thought maybe Carrie could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, because they have to have the publish your dates and all that, I think Carrie usually adds to that.
Yep.
An opening date at nine o'clock or nine thirty, whatever. Okay.
Right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. See, in striping, we've got a striping agreement.
Yeah.
With the state.
The carrier, did I?
I did, they sent it right to me.
Okay. So I guess, is that for twenty three? So then I recommend you sign an agreement, chairman signed agreements.
And it looks like it's a, uh, the county share would be ten thousand six hundred forty one dollars and eighty cents. So what I would need is a motion.
Well, to uh, allow the chairman to sign the striping agreement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
And the only reason for that is because most of our striping gets done when we do the micro servicing, so that's going to be a small amount of retrace.
Yeah.
That actually will be. Because the stripings for every road where micro servicing was in the contract for micro servicing.
Yeah, this is forty eight miles of county roads. And it looks like the state is actually going to do most of the, most of the work, I mean, our, our, our job is inspection.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Rod?
I want to do that clay water thing first, then go into ditch board.
Sure.
So you, couple of meetings ago, you guys signed like
people packing.
Eight or nine right away applications, all but one. Then Larry caught that are to be encased.
Mm-hmm.
Yesterday, Playwood Water contacted me complaining they didn't know it had to be encased and they didn't, they got the contractor there, they don't have the pipe there. But I have all the, I have the packet of, I'm in here, went through it yesterday and Larry said at the meeting that you noticed that one didn't have encased, said it needs to be encased on a sticky note. But these are all filled out by the head guy at Clay Rule Water.
Steve, Steve signed them?
Yeah, Steve, Steve signed them, so I don't know. But they, so they contacted, they didn't have no luck with me, so they called Travis and we decided we'd bring it up because they, they don't want to, they don't think they have to encase them, or they, this is the first time they've known about it, well.
We've been.
So they're going, right, they're going under the highway nineteen. So I got a hold of the state and I guess we could start doing this to them and give them a thirteen page document that they have to fill out, but it still comes down to a twelve inch pipe going under highway nineteen and casing a twenty four inch welded steel pipe. So that piece of pipe that's laying in the field.
That's what that's for.
Yes, and he said they do not let them cross, so. While I was talking to Travis, I remember just last week, the city which have lines under Dakota Street, not encased. And Leo Powell called me and said, you got water coming up through the road. So I went down and looked and of course the city guy was there and they had a leak and the inch line on the road was all wet across the road. And of course his emergency fix, so they put it back in without it being encased, but that's how you find out you have a water leak. When you're doing encases, when it comes up through the road and not out in the ditch, because you got it encased. So I thought maybe they were coming, uh.
No, I told him I'd bring it up and we discussed it, they just, they were wondering if they could get a waiver, because they didn't order it, they didn't, they thought they had some agreement with the county that they didn't have to encase it. But like I told Rod when we were talking, we shut the water project down in Wakanda because they weren't encasing them.
Yep.
And they had to wait. So granted, between then and now, we've got a new manager at Clay Rule Water. I don't see how we can give a waiver.
No.
That same form has been in, in effect for six years at least, and uh, uh, it's been pretty, it's pretty plain, anybody that signed that form, unless they didn't read it, uh, knows that it's, needs to be encased.
I mean, on, on this form that Steve filled out, it says right on there fourteen inch water line encased in twenty inch in a twenty inch casing. I mean, so I, I don't understand how they they didn't know.
They filled that part in, didn't they, the dimensions, the diameters, right?
Yeah, they're the ones that.
Filled in those diameters.
Is that a state bid or the state one or?
This is the county one, here's the, here's the one under, it goes there. Eight inch fusible PVC pipe, casing pipe will be twelve inch diameter, prestrained joint PVC pipe. Right here, horizontal direction board.
They, they knew it. I'm one of the landowners that they have to cross, so we had these eminent domain meetings. And I told them, I was like, when you cross the county road, you have to get a permit and it's got to be encased. Now, whether they were listening. And the engineer was there at the time too, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it, it sounds like it's pretty much unanimous that they can do this. It's just, it's like a non, it's like a non-starter.
That, that water surfaces through the middle of the road, you know, and that's uh, blowing a, blowing a crack up through there and it's weakening the road bed, so that's the reason we want it encased.
And that was only.
It's out to be encased.
Yeah, it was only a one inch line on Dakota Street.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're talking fourteen inches in some spots.
They blew the eight-inch just to the west of my property and the hole that it left in the field. I mean, what it would do to a fourteen-inch, what it would do to the road?
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to just, uh, tear out fifty feet of, of the road bed.
Oh, yeah.
Recompact the, the sub base and then bring it all back up. It, uh, it'd be a costly adventure and probably close the vote for a while. We don't need them.
Yeah.
That's if nobody hit it in the meantime.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, yeah.
It'd be sort of like what Surface Water did up, uh, South of Greenfield there on that first turf, remember that, those, that bridge that washed out there?
Yep.
It would mean, it could well mean that that road would be closed for new on it.
Yeah, so it doesn't, I, I don't think you need a vote, I think, you know, they, they signed the contract, they agreed to it and now they don't want to do it, it's just not a, not a possibility. So I'm, I'm sorry, Rod, but you, you have to explain it to them.
I explained it yesterday, but apparently they believe me because he got a call, it's funny because I seen his name come up on my phone, I go, gee, I, I wonder what this is about, because I haven't been off the phone in ten minutes. So I, I'll tell them, they're, he's gonna have to wait, I will keep an eye on him though, so nothing sneaks in there.
All right. Anything else?
No.
All right, well, thank you.
And we need to go in to ditch board, or do you want to wait on that carrier?
Yeah, we could, I mean, go into ditch board now, sure.
Move to go on the ditch board, second.
The motion and a second to go into ditch board, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
We're in ditch board, Brad, are you on?
I am on, do you hear me?
Yep.
So I, I did a little, um, visiting with FEMA and, uh, the, uh, and the, um, emergency management folks with the state, you know, on our ditch cleanout portion, the FEMA portion. And here's where we're at. Is there's a time extension request that has been filed by the state to FEMA and FEMA has to approve that. Um, a, a couple of things, the, 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 the state emergency folks told me that, um, they do this all the time, they have a few of these submitted to FEMA. And they take a while to churn through. He also said he's never had one of these be denied. So, um, here's what's going on, you know, we had the bid opening and I have kind of, it's, it's all ready to go, it's been awarded, or we, you know, we got a notice award, I've been sitting on this to make sure that the FEMA portion was in line before we started. But it's, time is ticking away, so I, I, I guess I'll tell you what it is. Um, you know, we, you know, we should think about just getting this thing awarded, the contracts in order and, and, and turning the, so the contractor can start when he is ready. Um, the risk there is that FEMA would deny that, the time extension. I think that risk is really low and so did the state guy, but I didn't want to just do that without kind of visiting with you guys about that.
Yeah, so we were gonna do it whether we got the FEMA money or not, there's money in the account, so we can award that bid.
Let's just do it then, huh?
But why, but as far as that time? Um.
So the time extension with FEMA evidently.
The one that, they're the ones that delayed us, I mean, they kept fighting us on why they needed to do it, so why, we should get that extension, no, no problem, but.
We will get the, I think we will get the extension, it's just one of those things from the disaster date, there's a, there's a set time and if that, if you're coming up on that set, you have to file an extension, it doesn't matter any of the details in between, I, we're gonna get, I think we're gonna get it, but I didn't want to, it's not a hundred percent, so I wasn't, you know, if you guys are good with it, I'll, I'll get the contract done and we'll get it going, is kind of what I was fishing for.
Yeah, it should be fine.
And.
All right.
Brad, what was the completion date on the contract in the?
I think, oh, it's December fifth. And, and the completion, the date that we asked for from FEMA is December thirty-first, so that gives us a little window that.
I mean, we're, we're not talking a lot of.
No.
You know, less than a month extension, but I mean, if Weeman's ready to go and he can get in there, the extension ain't gonna no biggie.
Yeah, so. So, okay.
Anybody have a problem with awarding it?
If no one has a problem with it, I'm just gonna do that.
Nope, sounds like.
Okay.
Sounds like the right thing to do.
Yeah, anything else, Brad?
Nope, that's all I got, um. I guess, I'm working on, you know, I got your bridge plans, we're working on those, the deck overlay and the deck repair, for the deck chip seal. And, um, you know, I'll start your bridge inspections probably in June. Was, will, I, I'm wiggle that around, I might, I might go out and do some next week. Or, or if not next week, then it might take a couple of weeks, I'll do them in June, so, otherwise, yeah, that's all I got, this is just kind of FYI.
The water's really low in Play County right now.
Yeah.
So.
Thanks, Brad.
Yeah. Talk to you later.
Anything else, Rod, for ditch board? They can entertain a motion, move to come out of ditch board.
Second.
Motion of the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, we're in regular session.
Rod, I got it, I had a couple of, uh, voucher questions.
Okay.
Uh, which, maybe we do vouchers right away then, or no, or I could just add, maybe we can answer the questions and then don't worry about it.
Okay.
Later.
Yep.
Okay. That on Butler, the fall screw, screw grader, those must be blade screws?
Uh, they're.
Fifteen hundred bucks?
Yeah, there's support till we have a push plow.
Yeah.
Oh, we bought a couple of years ago, but it keeps digging in the ground. These are little shoes that go under the bottom to keep it from digging in the road or the pad.
Yeah.
And I didn't have them on my west one, I ordered it, I didn't realize that till he was trying to push. When it's wet underneath, it's really bad.
Yeah.
Cause you get it, but that's what they are, is a, a round shoe with a, then you can adjust it.
Yeah, I was, it said falls, F A L L S, uh.
Yeah, cause.
Grader, and I knew it's for the grader and I figured it was, uh, blade screws or something like.
Yeah, and, and it's a fall, it is for falls, it is a falls blade. But Butler is the dealer for falls.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like everything Butler is.
That DOT grading, what was South Dakota DOT grading? That was.
Was that for the bridge, the box culvert up by?
Might have been, it said South Dakota.
For like four thousand.
Forty-eight hundred and thirty-five bucks.
So that's, um, that bridge up by Land Deeds that we took out, put a box culvert in. So they, we paid, if you see the voucher, we paid like a hundred and twenty-six thousand, and that's, I think our share's like a hundred and thirty-five, so we're getting close, but they do it in stages. Though, and the grading is actually what they did out in the work zone to get the road shaped, the ditch is shaped and the seeding and all that stuff.
I see.
But that's it, up at that Land Dean one, the one we had trouble getting right away for quite a while, we took a wooden structure out legally.
I was just wondering, you know, paying, uh, S, South Dakota DOT to do the grading, probably because they're.
Right, all that stip money and stuff, they DOT send us a bill and then we reimburse, they, they do the contract, they do all the bid letting, then they pay it and then as bills come into them, we get our twenty percent.
Sure, sure.
So that's why it goes to the DOT.
Yeah.
And you'll be seeing that on, uh, two bridge projects Brad was talking about for the, uh, through that bidding program, it'll be done the same way. They, they'll pay it upfront and then we pay our share of it.
Sure.
So.
Just curious on how, how, how that all works out in line.
Yep.
Thanks.
All right. At everything?
All right, thank you. I'll get out of your.
See, Carrie.
My turn in the hot seat?
Your turn.
All right, I think the first thing was an update on, um, the issue from last week with the audit. And just to follow up, um, the state auditor had noted that there was a discrepancy in the cash balancing between, um, the bank balance and the general ledger and thoroughly confused, um, Rhonda and I because we balance daily. Um, we sat down with him and, uh, you know, David said it almost has to be a software problem, which is, we agreed with that. Um, we reviewed other reports that came out of the same portion of the software and those reports had the correct balance, so it was really just that one report that he was looking at. Um, got ahold of Patty, our software programmer, and she was able to look back and see that it was hung up in the process somewhere when that month, um, was completed. And so it didn't carry the correct balance forward to that specific report. And then, of course, after that, then that report was wrong because it didn't have the correct balance for the previous month. So, um, really the reports that Rhonda and I were using to balance had the correct amounts on them, it was just that one that he was looking at that did not, so.
And he accepted that, he accepted that.
Yep, he was fine with that. Um, so yeah, in a nutshell, it was a software issue, he said that's not uncommon, they run across that occasionally, so.
Is that gonna be in his final report?
Um, I don't know whether it will be or not, he didn't specifically say. So, um, I know he said if we were to go back and respond to it and ask that you know, things sort of back up, that it would hold up the report, which then holds up our bonds.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I don't know, I guess, um.
But if we could tag, take an additional page on it or something.
Something.
Response, a letter doing the move of that or something.
So, in a nutshell, nothing that we were necessarily doing wrong, it was just software.
And can Patty fix that software glitch, so we?
Already.
Oh, good, and, good, good, so we don't have to go through that again.
Yeah.
That was sort of a moment.
Yeah, it, it was, and, uh, you know, he, he probably could have talked to us about it ahead of time, except that I was out sick the day before and it, it just, it just didn't happen, so.
Or he could have mentioned it as he was going through it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, it was almost like he got here with a gotcha moment.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, other than that, I have a, a contract with ESNS for our election services. Just something that we renew periodically, um, they're the provider that the state has certified and so that's who we use. So we're just seeing a signature on that.
We'll authorize the chairman to sign.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, um, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carries. Um, vouchers, has everybody had a chance to review the updated vouchers? Or do we need a minute?
I'm good.
No, I'm okay, you're good, the one that I don't think was Rod's was that Midwest alarm, what's that for?
That's for our panic buttons.
Yeah.
The, the last of the panic buttons in the courthouse, they've got those all installed, they're all functioning, everything's good, so.
Nice.
Excellent.
Um.
That was supposed to be added.
I was not down here when they put it in, Andy, are you on, do you know where they put the button in this room? Probably.
I know, we're all.
Probably on the back wall.
I, I'm, I'm here, I will double check on that, I told him, put, put it right where you said, Carrie.
Sit.
So.
Carrie.
I.
Oh, is it next to you?
That's the remote.
Oh, oh.
Should be.
I found it.
Okay.
Found it, we're good.
All right, so you and Dick are in charge in case of emergencies.
They, they tested them as they installed them and I know in our office, they've been tested, um, at least a couple of times, so.
Don't bump it with your knee, Dick.
No, it started recessed.
Okay.
It's a little round button, so.
Yes, yeah, they probably had that problem before.
Have to push both.
Oh, I didn't know that part.
Yeah.
If I, if I could interrupt you for a minute, there's certain, certain things aren't really suitable for public meetings.
Yes, I was wondering about.
Thank you.
We could cease conversation about where the buttons are and how they work.
All right.
If any bad guys are listening, we're moving it, it's gonna be somewhere totally different, yeah.
Okay, so any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I think I totally missed who made the motion.
Uh, did I do that?
Maybe I did. No, I don't remember.
I'll take your responsibility for it.
All right.
All right. So we have a, a draft MOU from Lewis and Clark Behavior Health Services, which essentially assigns opioid settlement funds to them for treatment of, um, addicted individuals.
I think a lot of the counties are doing this because they are struggling to find a way that, that the funds can be used under the county umbrella. And since Lewis and Clark is essentially our treatment center here, um, they have proposed that we pass the funds through to them and they will use them in a way that applies.
And it's not a credit, right, or what we give them, it's on.
It's an addition.
Yep.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have an amount in that paperwork?
It doesn't, I think we have to fill that in, um. So, I mean, I can do that, back and see what we got.
So we do know what the amount is, we.
We got a couple thousand and I think we've got another couple thousand coming, so it's not an enormous amount, but it probably amounts to five thousand.
Yeah.
Probably enough to treat one individual.
Yeah, every little bit helps.
Yeah.
So I'll make the motion to authorize the chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding with Lewis and Clark. Send the amount for whatever we received in the opioid settlement.
Correct. I'll second that.
Hey, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And, uh, see, Drew, we've got the Veteran Service Officer Salary Reimbursement Program and it looks like we get a raise this year.
Yeah.
The Travis says every, every few hundred dollars.
A little bit helps. Not gonna buy a house.
Wasn't sure if you were coming down for that or not, but, um.
Maybe, all I got was a letter, I have no other information.
I, uh, yeah, we do get that thirty-seven fifty a year, um, to help offset Drew's salary. And I guess my question when we got this letter, um, was whether you all, you know, wanted to keep that at the county or whether you wanted to pass that on as a raise to Drew, so that was my, my question.
This would be in addition to what we budgeted for Drew's salary. Correct.
Yeah, and this is as of, um, July one of twenty twenty-three, so I, I think that that probably belongs in our, our budget discussions. Um, since that's a.
Well, it can be, uh, I mean, the thirty-seven hundred we're getting now just goes into the general fund, right?
Right.
So I think we should just keep doing what we've been doing.
Okay.
Just to just to stay on par with what we've been doing.
Correct.
Yep.
It's not a reflection on you.
So no, I don't, I don't, don't buy a new car yet.
Okay, didn't intend to make it awkward, but that was, that was what I intended when I put it on the agenda was to ask that question, so.
Salaries always get awkward.
Yeah, but it's goo, it's good to know we have that when, uh, when we're doing budget. Yeah, so I, I, there's, is there any, there's no agreement or do?
No.
Nothing we have to sign because we already have an agreement with them.
What happens is at the end of every year, I send a payroll spreadsheet essentially, um, certified by me that it's true and correct copy of what's on file in my office, um, send that to the state, they send us the check, so.
All right.
And there was a change by the legislature and reimbursement. And there was a change by the legislature in reimbursement amount this year, as I recall.
Yep.
Alright. And I think that needs know, any, anything else you wanna say about it?
No, not about that.
No, we, uh, we, we had a joint jurisdiction meeting uh to jump down from beyond building projects. Do you have any building projects you wanted to talk about?
Me?
Yeah.
No, not yet.
Okay. We uh had a joint jurisdiction meeting last Tuesday, was it? Last week.
Yes.
Last week. Anyway, and the, the main item on the agenda that night was uh adjustments to the joint jurisdiction ban. And uh the, we put in a proposal which largely left it alone. And uh, the city had a counter proposal that uh the main thing was is that they would give us back some land in various parts of uh the periphery of joint jurisdiction. But add a half mile wide strip centered on Highway fifty all the way to county line. And I asked Drew to bring that.
It was bigger than, yeah, it was bigger than last time.
I was going to bring, I was going to bring my copy down and I, I uh escaped the house without it. And so uh the part clear on the right side of the map is we're looking at it with the crosshatching or the, the stippling, uh that's the area that they would add and their proposals to add in it, so extends the present east boundary of joint jurisdiction for that from a half mile north of Highway fifty, essentially all the way to the uh county line, south along the county line to the bluff, and then following the buff bluff line back to the point of origin.
And, and what's their, what's the rationale for their request?
Does they want it?
Well, I, the, the rationale expressed was that they uh, what they wanna do is make sure that the I fifty corridor on out to the county line uh was a wel- uh create a welcoming uh corridor, so for visitors to Vermillion. Along that corridor would, would not have uh other extraneous things that might be a blight on the landscape.
Paving the way for future city annexation.
Yeah. And uh, you know, and it uh, there's little difference, I think. The main difference that I'd see is that if there were proposed uh uh developments that would require, that couldn't be handled by sewage lagoon, for instance, easily. That uh it would require or be best served by a, a city sewer system. I think that's really the city sewer is the only reason that it would be better to have it that way. As far as uh keeping a uh development that would be relatively attractive within sight of Highway fifty, I don't see that uh having that under county jurisdiction would be different than under joint jurisdiction. In fact, if it were a joint jurisdiction today, I would, uh as you've heard me say before, that uh properties within the joint jurisdiction are uh harder to rezone, at least there's uh perceived more hurdles to rezone in joint jurisdiction, and therefore it restricts development within joint jurisdiction. And so we end up with the, what I call bullseye zoning. Uh, that land that's within the city did, city uh uh limits is relatively easy to uh rezone. That in joint jurisdiction is more, more uh diffi- more difficult to rezone. And that out in the county is again easier, kind of like it is in the city. So we are uh discouraging development just on the immediate periphery of the city. In my opinion. And I think that the last twenty years has borne out that opinion. That's what my opinion is based upon.
Yeah, I mean, wherever the joint jurisdiction is, people work very hard to stay out of it.
Yeah.
They'll be right on the edge of it. But they don't wanna be in it. And the growth is gonna come from the interstate towards Vermillion. That's gonna be the biggest problem with that. I mean, if there's growth out there that should be served by a sewer system from the city, they can't get there anyway.
Yeah. That's, that's my interpretation, that that's the main difference that, that uh it would lead, lead to annexation by the city within that, or make it, make it uh uh so it'd be more likely to be annexed, and really the only real uh benefit would be sewage systems. Water, we already got that, power, we already got that. We've got uh other amenities along Highway fifty. The road system is, is there. It's good. It's better than what the city would do. Uh, so uh mainly it would be, come down to sewer would be really the only real advantage to uh making it so it'd be easier to bring into the city limits. That's my humble opinion. Any thoughts from you, Drew?
I, you're dead right. The, the sewer is the main why some business would come into the city or not if they represented the choice.
Uh, and since the, since the meeting the other night, you know, I've driven out there a couple of times, going back and forth, going dreaming of I would, okay, what kind of zoning, what time, type of development would we want where within that uh uh that zone? And of course, uh it could be mixed commercial on most of the upland. Through your sculptures, a spot where would probably continue to be a, a little residential district. And that where it's proper along the block would probably be residential expansion. Just thinking ahead, dreaming of what's could happen in the next twenty to twenty to fifty years. And that's what I would expect.
It's gonna be industrial along Highway fifty, though.
Probably commercial would be where.
Well, you've already got Union County, who's industrial on both sides of the road of Highway fifty already.
Yeah. Well, I don't, yeah, I know on uh, uh out there were Low Conners and, and the and the pivot dealership and uh coffee cup, you know, those are really the sort of stuff that's there, and uh I would think that something that would be commercial nature would be best on the highway itself.
You know, if I, if I had to guess, um, you know, and, and this is just from sitting at ICAP meetings um for the last few months, what the city's thinking, they're probably thinking about housing infrastructure. Um, the city's about out of um land for housing. Um, and I, I have no idea whether any of that is suitable for housing if without, without sewer or not, but if I had a guess, that's what the, but that's what the, the city's talking about. But in terms of commercial, um, you know, I, I don't think there's any advantage for commercial businesses.
We have what, three industrial properties, I guess, along that quarter, within that proposed area. And uh, I I would be a little reluctant to add to those. I think that uh, I think more of a commercial development would be more appropriate, in my opinion.
And then more industrial out toward uh, out toward twenty-nine. Is that what you're thinking?
Could be or off the off away from the highway itself, a little more out of sight, out of mind.
Or maybe include screening.
Yeah. Appropriate, you know, it'd be conditional uses, and of course, we'd end up probably requiring fairly like cedar, cedar uh uh or a screening.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting the difference that screening makes, um, that, you know, i- in, um, in, in developing more commercial industrial
Yeah.
uses. I mean, it, it, it's really powerful. Um, there's a city out, city out west where my mom lives, and they've, they've built these required buffers for everyone, and it, you know, e- even though it's incredibly crowded city, doesn't feel that way. Um.
Yeah, I think the best analogues here are uh Highway, it's the Highway South from Huron. Uh, that's a, that's a major quarter, quarter into Huron from down in the Mitchell area off the interstate, you know, that's a good analog to what we're talking about here, that first two or three miles south of uh Huron, over the first few miles outside of Millbank. There's uh, it's heavy, there's heavy uh commercial uh development there, but it's uh, it's still commercial.
Yeah, might be worth asking the city what, I mean, what, what they're thinking about. I, you know, maybe, I don't know if Jose would know or.
Yeah.
What they're thinking about with this plan? They wanna control what comes in along there. I mean, that's, that's been stated at past meetings. They wanna know, they wanna have a say in what comes along Highway fifty. The problem is they don't have a say once it hits Union County to the interstate. And I know what those proposals have been, and one of these days, it's gonna come to fruition out there.
There's not much space there. That's only not quite a half a mile.
Yeah, but it's, there's a lot of space, so. There's a lot of space to build. Yeah, I think there's over a hundred acre zone, what, commercial or industrial, whatever that is, just.
Yeah.
On the south side's a hundred acre, at least a hundred.
Yeah.
But that all wraps around, it's probably more because it wraps around behind the coffee cup from the county line. But I mean, they're talking truck repair, packing plants.
Run washing.
Truck wash.
Yeah. We have no control over that.
No.
But.
But it's tough to go from that to
Maybe.
But we're gonna, we're, it's gonna stop development. People are not gonna want. And nobody's asked the people who live in that new expanded area. They didn't get the postcard. Do you wanna be part of this?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, and I think that's really important.
And we, we need some, we need input from them before we make any sort of changes like that.
Some of them have provided input and they're not in the favor.
Yeah.
But they heard about it, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would not be something we'd wanna do without consulting.
You're making sure.
People who live there, yeah.
You'd be careful, we could tend to sell it as, this is a benefit of going into joint jurisdiction, but nobody can.
They're, they're not, they, they might not see the, the benefit.
But, yeah. Kinda hard to put it in a brochure myself, but yeah.
Yeah. So I, I think we're better off to leave, leave the boundary where it's at, in my own opinion.
It seemed to be the feeling in the, in s- some of the survey questionnaires too that went out, I mean, it seemed like generally the
And we had a letter that talked about, you know, somebody that was completely off in the other, other direction that, that talked about uh the benefits of uh developing the Highway fifty corridor up to the interstate. And that was, and I think they were well thought out and thoughtful uh suggestions, but uh but they weren't, it wasn't anybody that would, that had any uh business or residence out in that, in that area. We lived up, we're more like up where Travis lives.
I didn't fill it out, it wasn't me.
No. Well, I know who it was.
Interesting.
I agree that it, it could just be a deterrent at this point, until there's more information, but I don't see any benefit to it.
Yeah. Well, I wanted to bring it up, you know, and so that each of you would have a, a chance to see what the, that proposal is. And uh, we need, uh, I think the twenty-fifth is our next meeting where Sean from CCOG is, wants us to uh hammer this out a little bit after we've uh gotten feedback from, from this board and our our planning commission and the city planning commission and the city council.
I've always been in favor of just adding a half mile, if, if you were, if they grew in a certain direction. You know, you give them another half mile.
Yeah.
As they grew, you know, in that direction.
Yeah. And that's a, that's a good idea in that it promotes orderly growth.
Well, we don't have to come back and redraw the line all the time and argue about it. It's just
Yeah.
It moves with, as the city moves.
Sure.
The line moves.
Sure.
But they don't want that.
Well, that, that's certainly a, a good suggestion to promote, uh, like I say, orderly incremental growth.
Seems to be the core purpose of JJVA, you know, so.
Yeah.
That should be our guiding star.
Yes, yes.
Orderly incremental growth, yeah.
Well, that's uh, that's what I know at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like a consensus.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks Drew.
Yeah.
What else we got here? Um, Travis, any building?
Nope, I don't have anything yet.
Okay, um bond?
So I think you guys all got that um email from Tom Girmand. Wanted to know how we wanted to structure the bonds.
Do we sell them as one bond? Or do we sell it as one bond, or do we sell it as?
The way I understand it is there's, there's opportunity for people, even, you know, even local people to invest, so I think it's, it's more a question of like the total aggregate limit. I don't tend to understand everything he put in that email, but it sounds like, you know, if we structured it one way, the limit total cutoff forty-two point eight. We structured it a different way.
Well, we, if we structure it the way we voted on it, it can go up to forty-four.
Right. So it just, it's, it's a matter of how we choose to do it, and it still falls under what was voted.
I think we should structure it the way we voted on it. But we don't have to spend the money if we don't need it.
Right.
Now, I know the general public's gonna be like, yeah, whatever, you're gonna spend every dime that we can give you, but I'm not in that camp. Yes, I told plenty of people on the campaign drill.
And that's why you're on that committee.
That's right.
Because we know you'll do it.
One that we did vote on, is that the one that ends up having that new distributions yearly contributions at uh uh two million twenty-three thousand, or the one that's one million nine forty-nine?
Should be the two.
The two, I think.
It's twos. That's, that was what I remembered, but I I'm not sure.
Tom's not on, right?
No.
Okay. Yeah, myself locked out because my password expired.
Oh, no, that means it's gonna happen to all of us really soon. Um.
Yeah, I, the way I understood it was the way that Travis understood it. I just didn't wanna make a decision. And I'll, I'll be correct.
Yep.
And I felt like you guys needed to give some direction on that.
So we pay it more, a little more per year, but our overall expenditure is going to be uh Yes, I know. There isn't much difference.
No, no.
It's very dirty somewhere.
It's not much different. But our annual uh bond payments would be about six hundred fifty thousand more.
So I think what he's looking for then is just a decision from you guys whether to go with the um, you know, the forty-two point eight in construction funds with forty-one point three eight million in PAR. Or the way we voted on it at forty-two point eight in PAR, which produces a forty-four point one million in construction funds.
Yeah.
And I.
I think the, yeah, the forty-two eight is the one that we voted on and one we probably I think the, yeah, the forty-two eight is the one that we voted on, and one we probably should stick.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I kind of, that was my initial reaction was that that's what, you know, you guys would want, I just wanted to run it by you before.
Yeah.
So.
Did he give us an indication how, how the rates are shifting?
Hmm, no, um, and I should have that audit report anytime now, David said that I should have had it last week by the end of the week, so I'm hoping any day now.
Yeah, and I, I don't think they're gonna shift in the next week.
I, I don't think so.
Unless something really crazy happens.
I think what I read was that that might have been the last increase that the Fed was gonna take. So, and I don't know.
Yeah, but if they do another increase, it's enough into the future that it shouldn't affect the bond rate. Um, but the, yeah, the bond rates are not, they're not gr- great right now, but I, you know, in the long-term perspective, they're still not bad, I mean, I.
Yeah.
You know, living, having li- lived through, uh, you know, rates that were up to ten percent on municipals years ago, uh, this is nothing.
So which one are we?
Could be a lot worse.
Are we saying the forty-two point eight in par that produces the forty-four million, or the
No.
forty-two point eight that produces forty-one in construction? Or forty-two million in construction with only a forty-one point three eight in par? Is that the one?
Carrie just said it exactly right, say it again.
Well, the bond election is the one, the, the one that we voted on, was the forty-two point eight million that produces forty-four point one million in construction funds.
And that's the one we wanna stick with.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because if we don't spend it.
We don't spend it.
No, we can't pay it, with this bond, we, we can't pay ahead for ten years. So even if we don't spend it, we're gonna be paying the interest on it. So. Because we can't use these funds for anything else.
Okay, so I think I know what to go back and, and tell Tom, I don't know that we need a specific motion, since that's what the election was for, so.
Yep.
No change.
Got it.
Right. Any other business to come before us?
Could we add anything else? Was it just those?
It was bonds, uh, clay, rural water, and ditch board.
Okay. Move to adjourn.
Second.
So motion to adjourn in a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.